Okay, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:36. Any adjustments to the agenda? I just have one. We have an executive session for personnel at the very end. Any others? Okay. 3.0 Audience and Communications. I know probably a lot of you haven't been to a board meeting before, so let me just kind of talk a little bit about how the structure of our board meetings work. Audience and Communications is for anyone who wants to address the board on any topic, something that's not on the agenda tonight, or would be an action matter. If you have any comments about the budget, or taxes, or anything related to the budget, that actually, those comments will be taken after the board goes through the topic on the discussion matter. So are there any, does anyone have any Audience and Communications other than, related to the budget? Okay. Then I am gonna move on to 4.0 Discussion Matters. 4.1 Budget Work Session. I just wanted to review one, a few quick things. You know, the mission of our school is to help our kids learn active and collaboratively, think creatively and critically, live responsibly and respectfully, contribute positively to their community, and pursue excellence in their academics and individual interests. As, the goal that the board has for the budget sessions is for the board to develop a budget that provides what we believe is a quality of education for our students at a price that our taxpayers can afford, and our community can afford. And our job as board members is to listen to many different voices, not just the ones here tonight, or the administration, but to listen, to learn all we can about the topics under consideration, and then to lead as we develop this process. So with that being said, we're gonna go into the Budget Work Session. The first item, 4.1.1, is the Association Input Regarding Contemplated Reductions. Contractually, we're required to give the Association, the Union, an opportunity to provide input. Is there anyone from the Association who would like to provide input on any contemplated Okay, I don't hear one. 4.1.2, we're going to move into Decision Packets. And before we go too far with that, let me just review a little bit where we've been. We actually started the budget on October 16th. This was actually kind of refreshing for me to go back and see where we've been. We started with a budget forum with a handful of parents. We've had five meetings since that time. This will be the third time that we've discussed the decision packets. At the last meeting, we took a look at the priority, prioritized decision packets from the administration. I think, and I need to get a little bit of input from Adora, I went back and watched the video. We have fascinating meetings.[221.34][221.34](Laughter). But, the way that we left it, I recall, before Christmas was, we kind of felt a little ill. We were looking at about a 10% tax increase with the decisions that we were looking at. We pretty much had focused on just looking at decision packets on page one. The page two and page three, I think we pretty much said, we can't go farther with. We were hoping that there might be some presence that came our way over Christmas in terms of changes to the baseline budget, and I think that is where we will start right now, to see any changes. Mr. Mason?
Okay, an update from the administrative side of things. Two changes. We've eliminated the technology decision packet for $7,500. That work will be funded within the school's SIRF fund, so you can delete it from your list. And we've added a bus contract adjustment totaling $11,203 favorable. Preliminary negotiations with your transportation supplier have led to them tentatively committing to keeping costs flat for the base contract year to year.
We appreciate that.
So that's an $11,203 reduction, and a removal of the $7,500 item. We were also asked at the same time about healthcare costs. On the change sheet that comes later in the process, you'll see that we've lowered your budgeted healthcare costs from 15% to 14% year to year, in line with what V-HI now recommends for its carry.
So if you do the math, and Bob has, the math all works out in the end the same. Bob keeps track of it different than I do. We started with a baseline increase of 5.1, with the changes on the change order sheet from the CY, I'm sorry, from the CSSU budget. The healthcare decrease, and the benefit of the reduction in transportation, we have a new baseline of $7,323,556.
Say that again?
It's a 5.4% budget, and it translates into about an 8.2% tax. To take the two-vote piece into consideration, we always will have $7,124,108 in the first vote, always. Right now, we're looking at a second vote of $199,448. So that's how the, those changes work out. And that's before we've added to the decision packets. Okay. Bob, do you wanna?
That's all I have as far as background material before you begin your conversation relative to decision packets.
Okay. So we'll save the other pieces for later.
Yep.
Okay. So, we are looking at page one of the decision packet, but I want to turn to you. Adora, is there anything from the other pages that you would like to have us bring, bring
I appreciated the conversation that you all had last time, and where it came out. My biggest concern, if we just say we can't do anything on pages two or three, my, personally, my biggest concern is the middle level literacy specialist. Given what I thought I remembered about a particularly high-needs class entering the middle level, and, so it's not just a question of general middle-level needs, there might be an additional need there with that class, and I wanted to clarify that, and see, check my memory on that, and see if that was part of, of that item. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just ask, Audrey, is that, is that part of where that literacy specialist recommendation comes in?
Is to meet some of the needs of more fragile reading learners who will be going on to seventh and eighth grade, that's a piece of it, but also, in looking at the vision, prior to Greg and I coming here, I believe there was a middle-level literacy specialist, and that was reduced. And when we were looking at this summer, at bringing in a middle-level literacy teacher, we looked at, I think, one of the questions you asked, what's your vision? And we did, I did say, for this decision packet, that we would like to have a middle-level literacy person, not just to meet those children's needs, but also to look at doing some more coaching and co-teaching at the middle level with the middle-level teachers. So it's two-fold, it's both.
Okay. Thank you.
We had talked last time, two pieces, I think, and Sue, and Kristin, and Jenny, and Abby, please, please correct me if I'm wrong. I think where we came down on that was that knowing that there's going to be a reconfiguration of the, reconfiguration committee recommendation next year, addressing the middle level, and seeing that our per pupils, or our class sizes in our middle level are pretty small, it seemed like we were jumping the gun to be adding in a middle-level literacy specialist, even considering that there could be a potential where we might need to cut a teacher next year, or the following year. That was one piece. The second piece was in looking at, and, and we didn't really talk a lot about this, but, you know, the co-teaching model, I think allows for some reimbursement of that position if you have children who have a reimbursable need in those classrooms. And I guess I was looking for, instead of just replacing what we had cut, is there a way to replace that position with something that could potentially be reimbursable, especially if it was set up in a co-teaching model? So I think the consensus was to wait a year and see with the reconfiguration, how does that all fit together? How do all the supports fit together for, for the needs? But that's, you know, that was my recollection. So, as I said, when we left, we were at 10%, just above a 10% tax increase. If we were to add everything on the first page, and actually, we talked about adding the substitutes for the best practices, because that's happening, and if we don't budget for it, it just comes out of fund balance. I think that was 4320 from the other page. So did anyone have any thoughts about whether we're sticking with 10%? If we want to look at doing anything differently? And again, I think we tried to look through all of these decision packets with the lens of, is this truly a need? Because anything that we add gets put into that second budget, or second vote, or are we enhancing our program? I think, Adora, that's a great way that you came up to look, to look at that.
So the 10% tax increase, Lynn, is including everything on the first page?
So 10% would be the primary classroom teacher. It's a 10 and 1/2% tax increase, with the primary classroom teacher fully funding both technology carts, mobile carts, and full-day kindergarten.
And the subs as well?
It's not the subs, but the subs is 4320. It's, it's not, I didn't include that piece in there.
So 10.5 tax increase, and what is it on the, on the budget itself?
7.4%.
Okay. Does that take into consideration the?
Yep, the new baseline.
The bus and the, okay. Okay, thank you.
So I'm sorry, the 10 and 1/2 is what?
The 10 and 1/2 is primary classroom teacher, both technology, both computer carts and full-day kindergarten.
It's the tax increase.
Yeah, is that the increase, though, or is that the tax?
The tax is a dollar three. And it was .93 last year.
And do we know, do we have a rough idea of what that looks like, you know, on a $300,000 home, or, I know you kind of gave us a breakdown last year when our, a meeting or two ago, when our per pupil was 14,000. It's, it's a dollar, so it's a dollar three per hundred of assessed value. So take 300,000, divide by 100, multiply by...
Oh, it's an extra 10 cents per hundred.
We did talk about doing half of the, the technology proposal. We talked about that, one cart this year, and one cart next year.
If we did one cart, if we did the primary teacher in one cart, it would be a 9.65% tax increase. The base budget would be up 6.67%.
You mean without the full-day kindergarten?
Without full-day kindergarten. With full-day kindergarten, you're still looking at a 10% tax, 10.21% tax rate increase. The base budget is up 7.15%. If we just did the primary classroom te, I may as well just give it all to you.[890.43][890.43](Laughter). If we just did the primary classroom teacher, the base, the budget would be up 6.4%. The tax rate would be up 9.3% to a dollar two.
So no matter how you swipe it, I mean, it's all, it's all significant increases, no matter how you put it. Even just our baseline is already a significant increase, and a tax hike, and the two-vote. I mean, these are...
And I worry, too, that, you know, we put off these computer carts. We need them for testing. It's better for our children to start to get used to them before they have to use them to take assessments. And are we gonna be in a better position next year? You know, so far, we haven't had that experience since I've been up here. Every year, it's harder and harder to...
So a couple of things on the SBAC. They actually won't use the laptops for the testing. The latest thought is that it'll be tablets that they'll need to take the SBAC.
Actually, Lynn, that's just, that's just a piece of the math.
They'll need tablets just for the math.
And that comes a little bit later, so that the SBACs are gonna be taken on a computer, but there's an additional tablet requirement that comes in the spring of 2016 for just the math.
So, we'll need to fund those.
Personally, I think might well be challenged, but, that's what they're currently saying.
Well, I had actually, I've had a, I've had, I, I think that we have been very tight in our technology budgeting, and especially when I hear Williston and Heinsberg taking, I mean, Williston's gonna do a one-to-one laptop initiative, and Heinsberg has a one-to-one laptop initiative, and it makes me think, all right, what are we doing? And I heard Greg say, you're not convinced that one-to-one is the right way to go. I certainly have not a clue whether it's the right way to go. We got at the last CSSU meeting, the technology audit, and kind of what that's gonna cover for next year. And there are some really good questions on here that I guess would be helpful to have answers to before we start ramping up our technology purchases. You know, how, how is the technology currently being used? What is the consistency of the delivery? Where is the evidence of transformative learning? What is evidence of adherence to a technology plan? I mean, I think, you know, how, how is it gonna be used? Does it make, do we, do we need to go full bore this year, when there are so many questions unanswered about how it's even currently being used? It would be one thing if we were replacing carts that were being used consistently, but we're pushing these down now into new grades where it hasn't been. Do we really...
But we have kids in third and fourth grade who could have more transformative learning experiences, and aren't, because we haven't had that asset. And if we wait another year, that's just one more year that we're further and further behind a school like Williston that has one-to-one computers.
But should we maybe, instead of being investing in a laptop, then making that investment into one-to-one? I don't know those answers. But, but in a tight year of wants versus needs, and, and budget increases, is there, is there a harm? I mean, even if we buy one cart, that relieves some of the pressure off of the lab here, and that's, you know, $17,000 we don't spend this year, and we'll get answers, and maybe be able to invest that more into tablets. Maybe tablets is where we should be going, instead of laptops. I, I don't know. I'm just thinking, when we're trying to, I know there are so many things that people want. Where's the, where's the trade-off? And it seems to me like this could be potentially a, a trade-off, where we don't have to buy both carts this year.
I agree with you, Lynn. I think both, I, I think we could go with one cart. I think the reality is that when you, that in introducing a, a set of, a portable set of laptops to the third and fourth grade, different teachers will incorporate that at different rates, and some will be ready to use it a lot right away, and some will not. We haven't built in any professional development around, around that. So, I, I think that having a set of carts for one team, or for two, or one grade, or for two, can be scheduled such that they all begin to use it. They might use it at different rates. I think that's fine, and we can develop a more comprehensive plan in the meantime. I, I agree with you on this one. At this point, I'm, I'm also aware that, I mean, I, I know our regular practice is to discuss amongst ourselves first, and then to hear from the public, but there's a lot of public here, and they obviously came with opinions, and I, my own thinking, I want my own thinking to be informed by the people who are here. So I'd like to hear from them sooner rather than later in the process.
We will. Okay.
I guess I'd be curious to hear Greg and Audrey's opinion, since that was your recommendation on having the two cart. What do you feel the impact is from going down to one?
Well, the, the main justification for the two carts is the, we really feel like we need to be moving away from the mindset of technology instruction as instruction on its own, and that technology is something you interact with when you go to a special room, like the computer lab. And that, for an order for a teacher to be able to integrate technology effectively, they have to have access to it in a way that makes it, that's easy, that's reliable, that does not require, you know, them to go, you know, the extra nine yards to get it, figure it out how it's gonna be in their classroom. So the idea is that this would, one laptop per, for the third grade, one laptop for the fourth grade, would enable those teams to have that technology at their, yes, at their fingertips. It will definitely require some professional development, and some guidance, and practice, and none of which you can do if you don't have it in your hands. And I would definitely say, one would be better than what we have now. I don't feel like two is going all out by me, any means. I feel like two carts is a step towards where we need to be. I, I don't feel like it's kind of like, this is the, this is the Cadillac proposal. This is, this is, we feel, a responsible recommendation. And it, it also, at the same time, would take pressure off the computer lab, allowing our first and second graders and kindergarteners to be able to access that space more regularly to learn some of the basic navigation, and keyboarding, and facility-type things around technology. But right now, there are too many demands on that room, and we don't want the perception to be that that's where we interface with technology.
But we are also buying, you said that we are investing in tablets.
Correct.
And we have about 30 tablets now.
Right now, we have, we'll have, we'll have 30 tablets included in this budget. So we'll have 30 tablets next year. That does not count tablets that some teachers have, and some teams have, individual tablets. And then our plan would be to continue to buy more tablets every year. We're buying, happen to be iPads.
So, where are those tablets being used?
Those tablets are being used in a variety of classrooms. They're signed out from the library, they're kept here in the library. So they're used in a variety of applications by different teachers.
So are we still doing the replacement cycle on the laptops and the desktops, and then purchasing tablets new? Or are we replacing laptops, desktops with tablets?
We are still replacing laptops and desktops, adding tablets. We're gonna be getting to the point where we'll start replacing tablets, because our, we're not there yet, but our tablets will get to be four or five years old, and they'll need to be replaced the first, first batch we bought. We don't anticipate adding desktop stations, but we also don't anticipate phasing them out.
So, I guess the question is, we're growing our number of computers in the school, regardless of whether we purchase one laptop or two laptop carts. We'll be, we've added 30 computers to the school. We haven't stopped replacing the laptops that needed to be replaced. We're still on that replacement cycle?
Correct.
All right.
So we wouldn't be adding, we'd be adding either 20 computers, or 40 computers.
But we're adding 10 computers as well. Lap, 10 laptops. I'm, I'm sorry, 10 pa, uh, tablets.
iPads.
iPads.
Right. Now, we're not equating an iPad with a computer. We're not doing that equivalence. You can get into that conversation, but we don't see iPads. We see iPads as a great tool. We don't see it as doing everything a computer does at this time.
But it's all in our technology budget, and the technology line item is going up, because we're buying additional technology.
Correct. And some of the reason the technology budget's going up also is for the network backbone to support it.
Right, right. Okay.
Is that clear?
Yeah, and, you know, and the wave is technology, you know, 21st century learning, and a lot of schools do have this one-on-one backpack model, where every kid has its own, you know, technology, one-to-one. And we're not even close to being there, I don't think. So I hate to get behind the eight ball with technology of all things. I think that we need to be a little bit proactive in getting what we need to be able to keep our kids up to date. And knowing that that will constantly be changing, technology's changing, we're already behind the eight ball now. It changes so fast, you can't keep ahead of it.
I don't know that we're behind the eight ball. We bought a brand-new website last year, and it's not being fully utilized. And that's frustrating.
Well, I'm talking about the kids, you know what I mean?
Well, but who's gonna lead the kids?
Right.[1546.41][1546.41](Laughter).
I mean, we can, we can buy all this stuff, but if you don't have somebody moving things forward, it's not gonna happen. And I guess, I don't, I, I hear, I don't want to overwhelm everything, and I also, you know, quality education at a price the community can afford. I don't know that we're harming our kids if we don't have a laptop cart for third grade, when they have access to tablets and computer labs, and, and who knows what else they have access to at this point? I think it's, I think it's a reasonable compromise to do one this year, and, and one next year, and who knows? Maybe when the technology audit comes out, it's gonna say, look, you know, you guys don't even have a technology plan. What are you thinking? I, I guess I just, I need more evidence. That's just been my line of thinking.
Takes an enormous amount of professional development to get ready to use, to be ready to, to utilize to the, you know, maximal, the infrastructure. And, so I, I think that point is very well taken, you know, that what, how, and also, I think I mentioned before, just scheduling challenges, and what is the flow of the day for teachers, and for students, and computers can be fabulous for that, but they, it also has to be really well thought out. And that takes time. And I don't know where the school is vis-à-vis those things, but those are questions that I would have.
And, logistically, if we went with one cart instead of two, so I assume we'd give it to fourth grade, but then, the following year, those fourth-grade teachers are third-grade teachers, and they will have figured out the best way to integrate how their teachings would incorporate access to that technology. And then do we say, now that you're teaching third grade, you lose that tool? I mean, how would that work practically? Or just, you happen to be fourth grade, so now third grade gets it, and maybe we can add another cart for...
Well, I would reserve the right to say that we haven't decided how we deploy it, if we had one.
Yeah.
In other words, I wouldn't necessarily say tonight that, that's definitely gonna be limited to fourth grade.
Okay.
There is also the idea that we'd propose another probable, propose another cart next year, if we didn't get two this year. So then those, if we did deploy it just to fourth grade, we'd have that second cart. So we'd have fourth and third grade covered the year after.
All right. Any other thoughts on laptops? Do you want to hear from the community on laptops, or do you, okay. Does anyone have any feelings on laptops? I didn't know if you wanted to take them one by one, or do the whole, go through the whole shebang?
Well, it could be either way, but our, we're thinking about this now, so...
Laptops. And if anyone has a comment, or question, or thought about them, if you, before you speak, please say your name. That would be terrific. Someone in the back had their hand up first, Joe.
Hi. I'm sorry, what's your name? I'm trying to think of the rationale of the laptops. Is it for local data storage?
Local, I'm sorry.
In other words, why are you, why, you're distinguishing between laptops and iPads, and I'm wondering, how are they used differently here? Because, I, I, you know, there's a huge difference in cost.
Well, actually, we get, the iPads that we've been buying are approximately $800.
Okay, there's like about $500 or $100.
The ones we've been getting are about $800. We have to get them with certain specs.
That's still, that's still cheaper than a laptop.
No, I'm sorry, the lap, did I say iPads?
Yeah.
The laptops we've been getting are about $800. The iPads we've been getting is usually the generation, the one generation older than the latest, so we can get them for three ninety-nine. So it's about a four hundred dollar difference there.
The one things that iPads don't have are the local data storage. That's why I'm asking, is that why?
It's local data storage. It's also, in terms of kids learning to navigate basic applications that they're not really proficient in, like word processing and things like that, that really the iPad is not ideal for.
Twenty dollars gets you a Bluetooth keyboard?
Again, but you're not using a word processor per se. You've also got.
Why not? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Don't do word processing on an iPad?
You can, but it's not the same thing. It's not, it's not the same platform.
Okay.
So then you have a variety of, you can get the internet, obviously, on the iPad and the, but then you do have file storage issues in terms of.
So you don't have a centralized kind of wireless system where you have a central server of any kind?
We have a centralized server. But we can't save from an iPad to the server at this time. We don't have the, not that, say, we couldn't pay for it. Again, it would be another expense that we haven't discussed, the cloud storage. So then we can move to a cloud kind of platform. So we're saving on the cloud. But, so, we just, we feel like, there's also the piece around professional development and where staff is around using a computer versus where staff is around using a tablet. And the bridge that it would be for staff to be at a certain proficiency level to teach kids before kids can get there.
Okay, thanks. Joe, would you?
I mean, after hearing what you guys are talking about, I think that definitely you guys need to have a plan on how to use the computer. And then also, that is my understanding, not all kids have computers at home. Some of them rely on the school for that part of the technology that they do not have on at home. So the question is that if we have the laptops or if they have some sort of way of getting through e-commerce, they can at least expose to it. And I'm sure that anybody here, that if you give your child a laptop or an iPad, they can figure out how to use it in five minutes, just like my VCR is still blinking twelve, because I couldn't figure out how to program it. But I have seen a child, give him an iPad or laptop, they can figure out what they need to do in about five, ten like minutes. And I think some of them, it is just the explorations of the tools, not necessarily a structured way of using the tools. Luckily, it's not a chainsaw, so we don't have worry about cutting their fingers off. But, you know, let them have it and let them see what they can do, so let them do the exploration. And I think that it is important, I mean, let's say, you know, you do have a, need to have a structured plan on how to use the computers and better further the education, but also the exposure. The more exposure that, no, that they have, the better that they will be as they get on the order.
Thanks, Joe. Any other thoughts on the laptops? All right, guys, we need to start making some decisions. So how do you want us to go about it? Do you want us to go down each?
I think we need to start with the priorities and start with where, if we're going to take it, if we're not going to take it, and go through in the order that the administration has put their priorities. So the first one is the primary classroom teacher. Any questions?
No, we went over this at our last meeting. I'd be curious to hear if there was any input from the.
I just, I have one, one question that I, I went back and looked at numbers. So I know that this is, to add, the primary classroom teacher that was, is currently there now that we did not put in the budget because there was going to be a reconfiguration recommendation that potentially could have resulted in a reduction in the middle school that would have been paid for this position. So I just want to go back and make sure I'm clear and I understand everything. Because personnel is the majority of our, of our budget. Okay, so, right now, if we weren't to fund this, we would have first-grade classes of, I'm sorry, next year's second grade would have classes of twenty-three and twenty-four kids, which is well above the CSSU average, and it's well above what the state and actually what our policy says in terms of recommended staffing. But if I go to our middle school and I look at our projected class sizes for sixth and seventh grade, sixth grade projected class size is fifteen. CSSU average is twenty-four, and the state is between twenty and twenty-three. So we are well below there. And in seventh and eighth grade, we're at nineteen point six, and the CSSU average is twenty-three. Again, we're well below average. Why would we not reduce or take the FTE needed for first grade from the middle grade?
Well, first, just, the KDA configuration committee started in October, our work, and we did have a goal of trying to have something, a recommendation for November, but the committee members felt we didn't have enough data in front of us looking at research as far as our surveys out to parents and to teachers and to students to make that decision. So we weren't ready to make that. We wanted to wait to make that till March, so that's why we didn't have something for this budget. When I presented this, I think you had asked this back when we first presented in December. We currently run like three sections, and if we went to two sections, we'd have, we'd start off with twenty-four. So right now, I think we have forty-seven, maybe have forty-eight students in sixth, coming into sixth grade. So if we have any kids coming in over the summer, like what happened this year, I may be coming to you in July or August again, saying we're over the class size of twenty-five to twenty-six. So until the configuration committee has completed their work and looked at the configuration that we're proposing, we didn't feel comfortable doing that. And I don't want to have to, you know, I think I told you, right now with having fifty students per grade level, if you started off with two sections of everything, you're going to have twenty-four, twenty-five. If we go to three sections, if we go, say, at three sections, we have about seventeen or seventeen. So it's just that number. We're at that fifty number, and it makes it very difficult to plan.
Okay. Okay. And if we were at that twenty-four, twenty-five, we would be apathious at the top of this.
Correct. And then if there's any people that come in over the summer, maybe coming to you again, saying concern, because when we started, I think in July, when we met in July, we had, we were going to have twenty-seven to twenty-eight in a classroom at sixth grade. We had five new students that came in over the summer.
Yeah, we haven't had a great deal of success in our rolling the dice on that.
And the needs are, are there in that particular group of kids? And, you know, without that literacy support that, you know, perhaps may not be coming to them. I think that that, that grade especially, it's, it's good for them to have a little bit of a break in their class sizes and have that intensity dealt with, you know, with the teachers having a smaller class is helpful.
Is there anyone here who would not fund the primary classroom teacher?
No.
Is there anyone out in the audience who'd like to speak to the primary classroom teacher? This is the quietest audience we've ever had. It's all, they're saving it all up.
It might be a one-issue audience.
Okay, so we are going to, Clyde?
Yes.
Can you hear the conversation? I should ask.
I can hear parts of it. I know that you're discussing the, um, primary level teacher. So if you're asking me, I'm sure that you already know my answer. We have this myth about class size that is a very expensive myth and not demonstrated in any material way by results, by outcomes, either in Charlotte, in CSSU, nor in, um, the nation as a whole. Now, boy, there's a lot that I would like to say. I don't want to clog this thing up, but let me listen to some more of what people have to say. My answer on the primary thing is that it's not necessary. And we have a very expensive addition to small classes.
Okay, thanks, Clyde. Oh, I'm sorry. He's basically said it's a very expensive addition to, to keep small classes and that, we all pretty much know his opinion on adding. He doesn't feel that there is evidence to suggest, to support that. Sorry about that. Okay. We're done with the seventy-five hundred dollar that's going to the SURF, the mobile laptop carts.
I think we should ha, half it, do one cart this year, is what I would support.
Kristin?
I'm fine with that compromise of doing one cart.
Adora, one cart. Clyde, one cart on the laptops?
No, not at all. I get to put it in context. I guess I better start at the beginning. But let me just, can, it sounds from what you said that the audience cannot really hear what I'm saying.
Correct, yeah.
Well, then, I guess you'll just have to do your best to transmit it. But the second vote is going to fail. And it may well fail even if you just limit it to the amount of money above. The first vote is required to meet what stands as a five point one percent. The doors budget. In other words, funding the contractual obligations and the special needs. We have some peculiarities of thought here in Charlotte. Yeah, I heard you refer earlier to reconfiguration discussions. What we really need is a reconfiguration of thought. This, we do not test anybody on computer skills. There's an assumption made that these computer skills and all of the money that we spend on computers is essential to education, and it's not. And it's particularly not in some very specific cases. I heard Greg refer when he was talking about them to putting second graders and first graders and kindergarteners in front of the computer. Folks, we have no business whatsoever, in any way, shape, size, or form, of putting kindergarteners in front of the computer. It has nothing at all to do with preparing them for anything. And you can extend that conversation to the earlier elementary grades as well. We have this nature of reaction that every gadget and gimmick that comes along, the technology related, is essential and has, and that's about the things, as I said. We don't test people on computer skills, and they're really not essential to fully internally educating children. And what we need to be thinking about, you know, in living memory, with the exception of the twenty minutes that we argued about, the school day has not been changed. It's the same number of hours, it's the same amount of time. And every additional task and recall that you add really just brings us back to the prolonged argument about a mile wide and an inch deep, or a mile deep and an inch wide. And what precisely are we truly supposed to be doing? I heard you refer to this earlier, Lynn, in terms of the answers that we don't know about the things that we're spending money on. And the truth is, we never get those answers. And I don't say that in the sense that we don't get them from the administration. We don't get them from meaningful educational research that tells you where the pay is, where the payoff is for the things that you've done. So you've got to make that decision based on the things that we, we do investigate to find out whether children have learned things or not. And computer usage is not one of, I'm trying to think what else there is. You know my opinion on the kindergarten thing, I made my opinion clear on the primary level teacher. So what it comes down to for me is that we haven't had any rationale presented that, with the exception of the four thousand three hundred dollars that are, we need to spend for the substitutes, for the math instruction thing, nothing that's been presented is really essential to improving education, and hasn't been demonstrated. So what we need to be thinking as a, I think my battery's about to die, as a ward is, A, how we're going to present that second vote in terms of the amount above the initial three point two percent. And then B, whether in all of this, there's anything, any further reductions that we can make, because even at five point one percent, and I'm talking about money as opposed to educational benefit, and looking at it from the perception, perspective of the wider community, we're going to be pushing the limit to get five point one percent passed. And I think you're going to be cutting your own throats to try to cram anything else into that second vote except what is necessary above the three point two to get to the five point one that we need for the baseline. So is all that clear? Can anybody hear any of it?
And I can, I think they heard it. Everybody heard it? You're good?
Yeah.
All right. I'll just hang out here still on the phone if my battery dies. That'll be that, but otherwise, if I have anything else to say, I'll speak up.
Okay, thanks, Clyde. Okay, so. Is there anyone who needs to paraphrase, or? Okay. All right, so where we, where we're looking right now is a budget increase of six point six seven percent with a tax increase of nine point six five percent. So that leaves the divisive issue of kindergarten, full-day kindergarten.
Well, I was thinking, I'll, I'll start with this then instead. Because I left the G O B, and when I was driving home, it was during Governor Shumlin's address. And although how all this gets paid for, you know, one of his priorities is universal pre-K. And I thought, we also need universal K. That's consistent and is the same across, I think, the vast majority of school districts provide full-day kindergarten, both for the additional social opportunities for kids, the additional educational opportunities for kids. And as a country, I think we're moving towards trying to get at kids younger and younger because that's where you can sort of get kids on the right track. So although it's an expense that's significant, and I'm not unmindful of the burden that our overall bill has on our taxpayers, I think it's a sound investment in our future.
Do you see it as a program enhancement or a need? And if it's a need, what need is it addressing? I'm going to ask everybody that question, so just be prepared.
I think it's both. I mean, it's, obviously, it's an enhancement. We already have kindergarten, and we have a hybrid model, so we're enhancing what we have. And I think it's a need because I was, you know, I came in with my own mindset. I wanted all three of my kids to have all-day kindergarten, and I think probably most people know that. But also, I think it was a really compelling report about all-day kindergarten. You know, we charged a committee with looking into it, and we don't have their formal, formal recommendation. Is that right? We had sort of the preliminary report that, to me, it seems like this is what our kids need. We need to get them really ready in math and literacy, and that having that extra time in the beginning of the year is going to help get them on the right track. And whether or not the scores all even out by third grade, it can make our kids have a less stressful, and our teachers have a less stressful kindergarten through third-grade experience. And I think just, we have a situation with declining enrollment. I think a lot of parents, when they're looking where they're going to buy a house, it's a big consideration. It's, it's, we have an odd situation with our hybrid kindergarten model. So I think as far as bolstering the number of kids that we get starting in kindergarten and not having some surprises in first or second grade, and the academic benefit, the social benefit to all the kids, I think it's a need and an enhancement.
We're coming down this way, I guess.
I just jumped. You can go back to Adora, but I've just been thinking about Governor Shumlin's address, so.
Do you want to say something, I'd be about to hear?
I think it's a reality, just an economic reality.
Um, I think it's a reality, just an economic reality and social reality that we have all day kindergartens in our culture now. As someone with a background in early childhood development, I'm most concerned about what they're doing in kindergarten. And, so that's, that's what I would have to say about it. I would love to see more play and having kids be outside and, um, have place-based education. I'm not so much on the academic push side, except for rich language immersion and things like that.
And that's one of the reasons why I feel fairly strongly about full day kindergarten is because the, the, things are different now than what they were back when my daughter was in kindergarten even. The, the standards on what needs to be done during the school day is a lot different. There has to be X number of hours of math, there has to be X number of hours in literacy. And that's just the standard, and pushing that all into a half a day is challenging. And with the fuller, more time, fuller day, you can have more time to play. You can spend an extra hour on that Lego table if there's something really cool going on. The teachers can say, yeah, let's spend an extra half hour learning about this in a play-based, more relaxed manner, instead of having to fit everything into that very short period of time. And, um, I, I think that it is, I think it's the best thing for our kids here. Preschool's another great thing that we are offering, and I think that full day kindergarten is, is, is a need. Um, I think that, um, our kids do well here at Charlotte Central School. We do amazing things, um, and I always think we can do better. And I think that we would have less needs perhaps in our first and second graders if we spend the time when they're in kindergarten. We have a, um, hopefully the time that they're spent, we spend with them when they're younger will help get them, um, more on par with everybody else in the district. Our, some of our, the report was a little bit unsettling about our little guys not, um, doing as well as perhaps they should be. And I think that the, uh, full day kindergarten would help us with those numbers.
My turn?
Um, yeah, I, I generally agree. I think the, um, I think right now with the hybrid, it's an awkward, my, I have kindergarten right now, it's kind of an awkward transition in the middle of the year that is unnecessary. Um, the, the kids are in a good groove, and then you change the schedule, and it's a whole nother transition period at a point in the year where you could be rolling. And so, in my opinion, it, it's awkward as it is, and full day's a better option. We charged our professionals, who we trust our kids with, to do a study, to give us a recommendation. And I think we should honor that as well. My background's not in education, and I trust our educators.
Well, this is an issue I really would like to hear people on, because I'm somewhat on the fence on this. I think that the full day kindergarten idea, if we had, if we felt comfortable with our budget and the amount of, the levels of our spending, I would say, my ideal would be to fund full day kindergarten, but to keep the afternoon optional. Um, it is done in some schools. I think we live in a community where there are parents at home who can and want to receive their kids at lunch or come get them at lunch, um, and provide rich learning experiences for them in the afternoon. And I think that they should be allowed to do that. So, um, that's my idea of an ideal model. Whether we actually fund this now, um, given the pressure on the budget, I don't know. And I, I would like to hear from the public on it.
All right, well, can you hear from me first, and then we'll hear from the public? Because I have some, I have some thought about this. And apologies to Elaine for just coming on TV and talking about not focusing on seat time as much as other things. But I do not support, um, the change, because I do think it is an enhancement of a program. I think the data that we saw in the presentation was faulty data. Greg said it was faulty data. It wasn't, um, uh, we don't have any data that shows that the kids in our hybrid model are doing better than our kids in our half-day model and, and our straight half-day model. The outcomes that we do have for our kids are all very positive. Our kids, I looked at the ninth grade, um, C V U kids on honor roll, because all ninth grade kids take the same classes, so it's a pretty good idea to see how kids are doing. Charlotte kids were the highest percentage of all the schools on honor roll. And we, we make up the smallest percent. So when I start looking at outcomes, I'm thinking, okay, what impact does not having seventy days of, 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 you know, kindergarten, um, full day kindergarten do? Um, I, I think that if we are truly looking at transforming education, and it's not based on the time that you sit in a seat and sit in a classroom, it's what you do, I'm not sure just extending the day is the answer, because you, you could say, well, and, and, and the report, the committee even said, you know, we're not telling you what we're gonna do with the extra time. We're just gonna have a longer day. Well, so if all they're gonna do is play, should we pay thirty-three thousand dollars just to play? If you're gonna spend that time working on literacy, I don't know that I want my kids doing two hours of literacy. What are we doing with that extra time? And how is that going to, what is that going to get us? How is that going to be effective, and what is it gonna do to our kids? Should they be outside playing with that? I, I don't know. Um, I guess I see it as an enhancement of a program. I don't see it as a problem that we're fixing. And, and apologies again to Greg, I think the first thing he said is, I just want you to know, we have a strong program as is. So I don't think by not funding full day kindergarten, we are harming our kids in any way, shape, or form, especially when the outcomes that we look at and we look at how our kids do, they do really well. And, and, and I, I know Jenny, you said at the last meeting, I think your meeting was, you know, maybe people will vote against the budget if we don't include, uh, kindergarten, full day kindergarten. I think just because it is such a divisive issue, we shoot ourselves in the foot by putting it in there in the second budget, in the second vote, I don't know why I keep talking about second budgets, second vote, and having people vote against the budget because they don't want full day kindergarten. We are gonna have a tough time, I have a tough time selling any increase to this budget, but to take a divisive issue that doesn't show, um, a return on investment, a significant return on investment, I just have a hard time supporting. And I know there is lots of research out there that talks about half-day versus full day. We have a hybrid model. It, it, it was developed to meet the needs of, of Charlotte. And, um, I think the feedback that we've gotten from our teachers on that model has been very positive. So that's my opinion, but I'm here to listen, Lauren.
Can I just say, uh, do one more input about that whole, that we, you know, we don't have the data yet because we haven't done it this long. But, you know, the one thing that I didn't mention that I remember from the presentation is that the expectation is the investment in all day kindergarten may well result in a reduced need for beyond tier one instruction.
But that the cost, we wouldn't realize any savings, because they would just divert those resources someplace else.
Right. The matter about the money, though, is the thing, it's about the kids doing better.
Exactly. So for me, even, you know, maybe we could cut back the cost, maybe then we divert, and we have the resources then to help out with literacy upstairs. But it's certainly better for the kids to get them on track early and not need those supports. That's in their best interest, I think.
But we don't have data that says they're not doing, they're not getting that now.
We're the only school in Chittenden County that does not have full day kindergarten, is that right?
And we have some of the highest test scores in the state.
We could do better, though.
Right, but we also, if, we don't have the highest test scores in the state because we have a hybrid kindergarten model. There's-
But there's a whole lot of reasons for it, right? So, and that's the hard-
We don't know. I mean, that's the thing, we don't know.
You don't know what's a-
We can't, we can't break that out, because it's, there's no research on it. We're the only ones doing it, so we can't break it out. That's the difficult thing. To do a longitudinal study takes twenty years, because each class is so small and so different. If we really wait till we have data that supports it one way or the other, you know, our kids have kids in the school.
The ideal thing would be to be able to break this, this line item out and have it voted on separately. Ask, like a separate article. But I don't think we can do that with the way the two votes is set up. I think everything has to be, I'm turning to Bob. I think everything has to be included in those two, those two votes.
Could you just have a separate ballot item? Article?
I don't think, when you're in the two-vote range, you can do separate ballot items.
It has to all be included.
And you, when you vote, uh, either of those two amounts, you aren't necessarily obligated as a board to have things defined in or out of them.
Okay, so, does anyone have anything to say about kindergarten? I'm gonna start and go to the back, and if I miss a hand, please wave higher or something, so. Yes?
I need to ask you this, but as these folks are speaking, would you hold your phone so the microphone faces them?
I can do that?
Thank you.
Okay. Kim? I'm starting the front, moving back.
Uh, kind of service. Um, I agree entirely, Lynn, on this subject. I dealt with now the time to full day kindergarten, um, both from a parent perspective and from having been in a kindergarten classroom last year. Um, my oldest two kids were educated in full day kindergarten. We didn't live here at the time, and I was very nervous that my son would only be half-day for the first half of the year, and it turned out to be the best thing for him and for us to have him be half-day the first half of the year. It allowed him a time to relax that he really needed in the day. It made the transition in January, I think enormously easier for him to a full day, and it just, it worked really well. We have phenomenal students and phenomenal teachers here. We do have incredible scores. Our kids do very well at C V U. If there's no evidence right now that says our kids are being harmed by not having full day, I don't think in this climate we can push this through, and it's, it's too big a risk to take. Also, having worked in a kindergarten classroom, I know that it's very hard the first half of the year to jam everything into that half-day. It is, it's a strain on the teachers, it's hard for everybody. But there are plenty of kids who, for those first few months, they are not ready to be in school full day. They are just not ready. So unless we have tons of extra money and everyone's dying to just throw it our way, and we don't have evidence that says these kids are suffering from it, I do not think that now is the time.
Okay, I'm going in the back there.
Yeah, Lynn, a quick question. Do you know how our sort of half-day and part-day kindergarten students are counted in terms of equalized people counts?
Bob?
They're counted the same.
As a full day?
Uh, they're counted as same as a fully attending kindergarten student. Once you get above ten hours, you're counted.
Okay, so there wouldn't be a benefit then in getting a higher count?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, I, and I know some people's names, I don't know everybody, so I should probably assume I don't know anybody's names. If you wouldn't mind saying-
Um, Hillary Jordan. I have partial mixed feelings on this. I have both boys that did the half-day. But I feel like when we're talking in a discussion like this, we're referencing half-day versus full day. And if we really look at the timeframe, we're talking about three and a half months of half-day versus six and, you know, it's, the window, it's not half and half by any means. It's three and a half months, which is really no time at all. And I feel like there also, number two would be, there's gonna be a transition either way, and coming off a holiday with a two-week break for every one of us is a transition. So I don't, I don't know that that really factors into it. I also feel like, you know, if you have homeschooling versus more traditional, people tend to get a lot done in a condensed amount of time also. So whether we have a full day, which would then incorporate a lunch period, a recess period, maybe a rest time, what are we really getting done in those three and a half months for that two and a half hours? Is it gonna be that much of a difference? I don't think so. I think coming home at noon, if we with kind of servant is, those kids, at least half of them are not ready to stay a full day, and what will they gain from that?
Thank you. George, you wanna stay on this side?
Yeah, I'm gonna stay on that side, then I'm going this way. I will get to everybody, I promise.
Mandy Koskinen. I, I'm wondering if, if there's another way to possibly meet some needs for kids that we are, have concerns about, say, in early childhood classrooms. Can we look at, you know, those three or four or five, six kids and provide them with something after their half-day kindergarten experience that, you know, doesn't cost us this amount of money and can kind of get them on the right track? As, as Kristin was saying, um, you know, are, are we spending our money in the best possible way? If, if there's a large amount of money at stake and only maybe a few kids that could really benefit from that extra instruction? And exactly what these other people are saying, it's, it's a very small amount of time that we are putting kids into the classroom. And I think there's maybe another way to service those kids.
Thank you. There's a hand from the back, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'll second all of that, and just say that we can talk back and forth about the benefits of the good, so we'll bring it away, but, um, in a year like this, it's probably not something that should be, that should be there in the, you know, in, in the budget this time around. Whatever, whatever our feelings, I, I have a lot, I have personal experience, own opinion about, about what may be best for my kids or kids in general. Um, I think there's merit to both sides, but in, in a year like this, I don't think there's any merit in putting it in the budget. Try again next year, try again the year after, something like this, if you believe.
Thank you. Now I'm coming to the front here.
Hi, Rowan, um, I have a couple of questions. One is, is it mandated yet that kindergarten is a have-to? It's not mandated yet, because I remember in the original discussion years ago, before we even started this process, that we were looking at this model because if the state were to mandate it, it would be easier for us to implement it. And so they haven't yet mandated it. So while I agree that it would be less stressful for the kids to have full day kindergarten, I think if the state is not mandating it, and we are in the economic times, and you're trying to pass a budget, I really don't think it's wise to-
Rowan, are you asking if kindergarten is mandatory or just full day? Because kindergarten is not required, correct, under state law? We do not have required kindergarten at all.
Yeah, no, it's not, kindergarten isn't required at all.
First grade?
First grade is, but I'm just saying, if it's not something that's, if it's not something that's mandated by the state to have to have, and it's gonna cost us thirty-three-five to do the full day, and it's not a have-to, even though I get that it is less stressful to the kids, I think people, I mean, I would look at it more from a money perspective than, as much as I would like to see it for children. I mean, I have three of them, and I think it's to learn in a relaxed way is much easier. But, you know, it's quite a cost. And I think we need to be concerned of that.
Thank you.
Jesse McInteigh. I pretty much disagree with what a lot of people said on this side. I guess that's why we sat on this side. But I couldn't disagree more, uh, you know, with, with Lynn. There's so much to say. I mean, the evidence is, is overwhelming. Early childhood education is, is crucial, it's important. The evidence is there for this specific community, for Charlotte. Uh, no, it's not there. No one's conducting that study. So we aren't gonna have that data, if you wanna see it. But nationally, globally, and statewide, we know that more and more money is being invested in early childhood education. So discussing the evidence is, is really a non-issue. So internally, as a community, I think this, this raises a lot of issues. And one of the important ones is an issue of caring and equity. So what type of community are we? Are we going to care for each other? Yeah, we might say, uh, I'm not gonna have my kid go for that half-day in the beginning of the year. I'm gonna have them home with me for lunch. We're gonna do different curriculum at home that I can provide. Uh, I'm gonna pay for private school. A lot of Charlotteers have that capability, but there are a lot of Charlotteers that don't have that capability either. So they're gonna be left behind starting that four months earlier. And I think that's an injustice that we as a community really need to look at. And also externally, how does that look from the outside? We're one of the wealthiest communities in the state, but we decide to not fund a full day kindergarten, like ninety-three percent of the other communities. I think that's, uh, really reflects poorly on who we are as a community, as Charlotteers. So I think you should consider all of those important elements.
Thank you.
Thanks, I, I, um, agree with-
I, I, um, agree with a lot of, uh, a lot-
Can you just, I'm sorry, state-
Sure. My name is Marty Oster. I agree with a lot of what Jesse's saying. I, I've heard a lot of commentary on this issue, talking about, um, whether this is the right year to pursue it. And the reality is that the economic recovery we're experiencing is, is sluggish and tenuous. That's likely to not change. Inflation is apt to become a problem in the future. That's going to put more pressure on increasing costs and increasing budget and increasing taxes. That's not gonna change either. I think we need to look at what Jesse mentioned, which is to figure out what kind of town we wanna be, what kind of school we wanna support. Um, I think it's, it's critical that we give every child the same opportunities to develop socially, academically. And at the end of the day, it's disappointing that this issue seems like it's more of a budget slash political issue than it is, um, about what's really the best for our students and our children. And I, I don't think the arguments kind of that go against it carry a lot of weight. Lynn, you were talking about, um, the performance at CBU. I think the best leading indicator of academic performance as children get older is socioeconomic status, something Charlotte is obviously very advanced in, relative to Chindon County or the state. That's, that's it.
Thank you. There's a hand in the back.
It's me. Heather Mason.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, I, I happen to disagree that we, and I think we don't need full day kindergarten. And in fact, I don't think we need, uh, we're, we're fine with half day. I have two children that have, did half day and that's always opportunities. They were exhausted. Um, how they made it to first grade, I don't know. Um, I had a very old kindergartner who was born in October and I had a very young kindergartner in April. Um, and it didn't matter. Both of them did, you know, it was very, school, you know, school is tough and you have a lot of challenges and you have a lot of stuff that they're learning. They've gotta learn to stand in line. They've gotta learn. And so I think the model that we're experiencing now gives them that transition time. And then lets them be able to have a little bit more time at school after the, the six remaining months. I can't say that it has anything to do with money. I think it actually has all to do with kids. I've been able to, so I'm, I'm talking from a parental point of view, plus I've worked in kindergarten. Um, I've been a sub here, um, since nineteen ninety-nine and been able to see how the kids are in the classrooms. And, uh, we do put a lot of demand on them. And they're five-year-olds. And I think we put, tend to put too much pressure on them. So to give them those three months, um, to understand what it's, what they're supposed to be doing is, is, is a benefit without putting extra stress of having to know that and spend seven hours in one place, um, right off the bat. So I, I don't think we should have full day kindergarten.
Right, there's a kid, she was in the very back. Hi.
Hi, I'm Matthew Puff. Some of you know me. I have a first and second grader now this year. They both went through the half day with Ann Mason. Both of my kids did just fine transitioning. I don't think that they're hurt in any way. Unfortunately, in our town, it does come down to money as well as education. Some of you might have been at the meeting last night for the town meeting, but this is a portion of our budget and there are other increases that are gonna be happening, whether we like it or not. And for a lot of people, this is, this is gonna be a significant amount of money. I, I hesitate to say this, but I agree with Clyde. Most of this, um, we, we need to cut somewhere. We just can't keep spending. And, uh, you know, it's, everybody has their own choice what they wanna do with their kid. If you wanna give your kid extra education and it's not offered, then bring them home and educate them. You know, bring them outside, teach them to do something. They don't need to necessarily sit in front of a computer. There are a lot, there's a lot to be learned to get, just getting out into the woods. We got tons of stuff here we can do. They shouldn't stare at a computer all day. They don't, they don't need it. It causes social problems, I believe. Because you don't, you don't talk with anybody anymore. You know, you're behind a screen. And that's not being social. I think that sometimes we forget that technology can be damaging to our kids. And if we don't kind of control what they do, it could have a negative effect on us. So, thank you, Clyde.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm coming back up. I'm Jill. Jill?
I'm Jill Lauer. So, um, I've been sitting in school budget, or school board meetings for about nine years now. And quite a ti, a long time ago, there was a time when parents in our town only wanted a half a day because they wanted to be home with their kids, to educate them on their own, being outside, doing four winds kind of things at home and having the opportunity because not every other town offered that. And that's why Charlotte was really special. So, you know, um, I understand how parents have, um, needs and they think that our kids need a full day. But having a kid at CBU now and like Lynn said, being a mom of a freshman and seeing more kids on there from Charlotte than any other town, that was really awesome. So I really feel that when a kid starts here in kindergarten and by eighth grade, they're really ready to come out of this school. And, but when they go to CBU, they're really ready academically to be there. So I feel that to sell this in our town this year is gonna be a really hard sell. And, um, I love all of the kids and I really think that they will do fine without a full day kindergarten.
Thank you.
Monica Marshall.
I'm coming, I see the hands in the back too. No, no, I, Monica.
Um, so I have a unique perspective just because I have three kids. And my oldest, um, was full half day for a full year. My son was the first transition grade where they did the half day to the full day. And then my youngest has been, I think she's the third year that's gone through, third or fourth year that's gone through. Uh, we also repeated two of our children in kindergarten and, uh, due to age and maturity. But my perspective of this is there isn't a difference. I met Sutibo way back when we first started in school. She said, we, we were talking back then, and that was six years ago, about full day versus half day. And, you know, she had said something, she probably doesn't remember, about how, well, you know, they have to do the same thing in half a day and a full day. And I thought, wow, that's really true. They get a full day to do it. However, having five years of kindergarten, it isn't a big difference. All three of my kids learn at a different rate. The one that has, you know, half day for the full year is working faster than maybe another one. I don't, so I don't really think that you're gonna see a major benefit. I don't think you're gonna see the new full grade, full day kindergarten excels above and beyond everybody else. And as a lot of people have been saying, it's, a lot of the public is telling you, they don't want it. They wanna keep the way it is. And I think you're gonna find a lot of the community is gonna be thinking the same way. So.
Cecilia?
Just a question. Um, do you know what percentage of kids entering kindergarten come with preschool experience or education?
Can you repeat the question?
What percentage of our kids coming into kindergarten have attended preschool?
I don't, I don't have a firm number. Most.
I just feel like, you know, sometimes we, we reference this, um, a lot of the, the broader statistics and the national averages. And I think we have to realize we live in a community where we're not part of the national average. And, you know, we have the benefit, which we're very fortunate, that most of our kids are able to access a preschool education. Most have come in with some rudimentary, I would just say, reading and writing, um, skills. And, um, you know, and, and those, and a lot of those cases where communities where a full day kindergarten is, really does truly make a difference, I think in, you know, the realities in our community is probably just much more on the margin than, I think, the, the real benefit that you get in a lot of communities across the country.
Thank you, Cecilia. Was there, is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet who would like to speak? I'm gonna go back and then I'll get to you, sir. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sage Bagno. And I just wanted to sort of echo what was, what you had just said a moment ago. My oldest son is in third grade here at CCS and he went to full day kindergarten. Uh, we were living in Shelburne at the time. And my middle son, um, took half day kindergarten here last year. And I'm an educator, so I very carefully watch sort of what skills and, and sort of what lessons they're doing in the Bridges math curriculum and the Foundation literacy work that they do. And I can say that my son who did the half day kindergarten here at CCS accomplished the same skills and had the same opportunities for instruction, review and practice with those curriculum units as my son who went through a full day program at, at Shelburne. Um, and so I would say, I would, I'm in support of keeping the half day. I think from a curriculum instructive, instruction perspective, certainly every teacher uses time differently and, and is more efficient in some ways than in others. But from a curriculum instruction standpoint, I don't see a big difference, um, in adding the extra instructional time. However, I do see a lot of benefits that have been already stated here tonight about having that time and giving those children flexibility to, um, give them this extra three months to do other things in those afternoons.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Guy Franco. I'm a parent of a current first grader. And just to speak quickly to the issue of the preschool, um, my son did not go to preschool before kindergarten and a rather unscientific poll at that time suggested that he was the only one in his class who had not been to preschool. So, and I don't know how that specifically may have affected his experience. Um, I will say that although in general I do support the idea of full day kindergarten, I think in his case, uh, the half day transition to the full day was actually beneficial. But I don't know for sure how that might have affected other kids who did go to preschool. You'd have to talk to other parents there.
Joe?
Well, sixty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. If we take the two hundred and sixty thousand dollars divided by three thousand people in this town, that's how much it costs to fund everything. And you're right. What kind of town that we are living in, it says a vibe about why we're here. It's all about boiled down to money. And I agree with the statistics that that full day kindergarten usually does better. But then again, we need to look at what we, it's best for this community. There are so many statistics out there when we are the others that we should not and cannot be proved by one report come out there, one report gonna come over there. I think we need to focus on what is best for the school. Yes, if we have all the money, like sixty-eight dollars per person, we can pay for everything. But we don't. So the board has a very difficult task to come up with a decision. What is it that they need like to fund? Full day work for some student, full day don't work for some students. At the end of the day, education start at home. We have to be responsible for our children. Whether or not they do well in full day or not, we need to figure it out ourselves as a parent. So I think that it is boiled down to a dollar and, and cents. As is right now, it's over ten percent like increase off the baseline, right? I mean, it, just take, take this three thing. I mean, am I correct?
Taxes or budget increase?
I mean, the tax.
If we did full day kindergarten, it would be a, a ten point two-one percent tax increase.
So, I mean, if we take it out, how would that?
It's a nine point six-five percent tax increase.
So, I mean, maybe that's the storm, they broke the cameras when we go to vote, like three years a, 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 ago. And so I, I think that, you know, whether a full day or half days, it all boils down to like a dollar and cents. Because we are here because we are concerned of education and the cost. We do need to also look at the cost for those people who are on fixed income too. So, like to me, I personally do not think that that extra couple of months is gonna make much a difference in the whole scheme of things. But I think that next year, maybe the next year, maybe the year like after there is something that we can, we know, I mean, revisit. And it sounds like that this half day or full days, from what I can hear, doesn't really affect the academics. I think that somebody might say, well, they could do better. Yes, they can do better. Let's give them, each, each student a computer. Let's give them all the enrichment program. They will do exceptionally better. But we don't have that like money. So I think that the choice is that we're cut where we need to and we just have to deal with the fallout.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else in the audience? Go ahead.
Um, Danielle Vincent. I agree with a lot of the people that sat on that side of the room and the comment of what kind of town we be that doesn't support a full day kindergarten. I think that for some families, we do not want our kids in school full day when they are five or six years old. And there's some value to having a half day for half the year. And when we looked at moving to Charlotte twelve years ago, it was a half day program and that's what we liked about it. And when there was talk that it was going to go to a transition to half a year like it is now, I kept hoping, well, let it be after my kids are done because I wanted them home. So we can still value all of our kids, but see their educa, educational needs differently. And it doesn't say anything about who I am or who you are. It's what we value and want for our own children. I see it as more of a personal opinion in a lot of ways. But I also see that the increase as being an enhancement this year. And I, I don't support the change as a taxpayer, but also as a parent. It wasn't something that would work for us.
Thank you. Is there a hand on the side? Go ahead.
I, it's kind of all this, uh, but it's this question of, you know, who we are as a community. Well, I think who we are as a community is, it seems like we're, we all have to consider very carefully, you know, you have three and a half months where a parent might have to cover expensive extra care versus a long-term tax increase. You know, do we wanna, do we wanna press that kind of tax burden on people that may have a difficult time embracing it and dealing with it? When, you know, when we're looking at really dubious benefits.
Thank you. Thank you.
Deirdre Holmes. Just kind of take, taking the reality of the vote. I think the big picture is we all want the second vote to pass. And kind of listening to what everybody has said and, and the, the calculation that went with it, it makes me very nervous about the potential for the, you know, not necessarily that it's going to automatically be, be a tax increase because I think the first thing that's gonna happen is that it won't pass. And then none of the things included in the second vote will have passed. So that's, that's my primary reason to, to recommend postponing it, to not include it this year in, in the hopes of a, of a successful two-vote passing.
Just to be real brief, I, I wanted to voice my opinion that I agree with what Deirdre said and I think it's important just to keep that context in all these discussions that, just behaviorally, the nature of the divided vote, it just makes it very easy for people to say no to the second because they said yes to the first. And so in a way, I think Clyde's right, uh, Clyde might be right that we should maybe start with the expectation that the second vote is unlikely to pass.
Is it what? Unlikely. And we would have the second vote, we don't even have our baseline. Correct. We're, um, the second vote includes a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars of our baseline. Is there any other input on, on full day kindergarten? Thank you. Adora, you wanted to?
Yeah, I was interested in, I got the Oster, but I didn't get the first name of the Oster.
Marty.
Marty.
Sammy's husband.
Oh, I could have so much- I could have crazily just asked you. So, um, Marty's point that, you know, we need to think about the needs of the kids first and I do think that's our first responsibility. The tricky part about that is that the needs of our kids are diverse. So we have some kids who are either young or for whatever reason, they're overstimulated by kindergarten or for whatever reason, by lunch, they are done. And it's not just here. I mean, in every school, there are kindergartners who are woozy by the, by lunch and are pretty much done. And so, um, those kids might benefit from going home. Another reality is that in some cases, both parents are working outside the home and they can't go home. So then they get, then they go from here to the Charlotte Children's Center or somewhere else. And that's a, that's an exhausting transition also. And then they're adjusting to a new group of kids, a new group of adults. But then there are other kids who have all kinds of stamina, academic, physical, emotional stamina, social stamina, and they are- and they are powering through the day and learning more from being here for a longer day. So I think that there is no right answer that kind of captures the needs of all the kids. But it might be worthwhile for us to look into an extended day option here. If we keep the kindergarten for the half day up through December, but have an extended day option within our school, that reduces the transition for those kids who, you know, who don't have parents at home to bring them home at lunch and, and educate them there. I, I think that's worth looking into. I don't think it's something we can tuck into this budget and it might be that it would still need the parents to fund it, the parents who chose that option to fund it. But I think that that could serve more kids optimally than we're currently serving optimally.
So, can I just, to respond to you, we did that. My, and Jill, your class is in it, doing the same grade. A couple of parents, there was six of us, got together, talked to the school and we were allowed to use the multipurpose room. And we brought the kids in and every, I think we did it three days a week. And each, there would be two parents and we kind of rotated and we did different things. Some of us did arts and crafts, some of us read books, some of us did basketball. I mean, every, so every day for three days a week, we all did something. It was at the school and it got done at two-thirty. And then, so those parents that had older kids, which I wasn't one of them, but like Jill did, they could pick up their kid, all the kids at the same time or have them be home at times. So it really, it did work and it was fun. It was unfortunately disbanded because the school said we couldn't use the space anymore because of insurance purposes or whatever. So, but there was a big, strong parent component. And I was also with my son, who was doing the half day and then the full day that first year, another group of parents, and we just happened to do it at our houses. It is something that I think you could easily transition into.
So it could, it could be created by parents. It could also be staffed by existing school staff and the kindergarten room and, and everything else. Different funding options and scenarios, yeah.
So, we need to decide what we wanna do with full day kindergarten. And I gotta say, I'm looking primarily, and I hate to look at Sue because I just have to come clean. For five years, I've served on the board with Sue and she has done the majority of the compromising.
I'm waiting for your turn.
And I have to say, I'm not ready to give in yet.
I thought the literacy part would come back. And I have to say, that's the, the hardest thing about sitting on this side of the table is hearing all of this and trying to figure out, you know, put aside how I feel about it and figuring out what's best for the whole town. And that's really hard because I strongly believe that kindergarten, full day, hands down, the best thing for our kids here at school. But does the town agree with me? Half of you do, half of you don't. So what do I do? I have to be able to either convince all of you then, yes, it's absolutely worth it and you gotta vote for it and we need it and we have to have it. Or I say, you know what, I'm just gonna have to live without it and, and hope that we do the best that we can with what we have. And I've compromised over and over every single budget cycle. I felt really strongly about supporting things that I really think that our school would benefit from. Teachers, small class sizes, full day kindergarten, you name it. We could do so much better if we had the support of the community and the money is what it comes down to. And as much as I'm not about the money and I'm not about politics and all of that, I'm all about the kids. The reality is, there's a balance for sure. And it's no fun not having the support of the community. And, and so that being said, I'm not prepared to vote no on the kindergarten. Full day kindergarten, but I, I totally get it. And I, and I understand that this probably is not the time to support full day kindergarten. As much as it pains me to say that, we need to have our budget pass. And that is the most important thing for our school at this time. I think full day kindergarten is a wonderful thing, too. I think that's important, but first things first, really. And I, again, I don't think it's not gonna pass because of the kindergartner, but, you know, some people don't agree with me. So, and I hear you, I do.
So what is, what are you, are you saying yes or no?
I didn't say anything. I said, I, I didn't say anything. I said, I get it.
Part of politics, damn.
I get it, but I still have very strong beliefs on what I think is, you know, is right. And I, I haven't decided, you know, as, do I vote as for my personal beliefs and what I think is best for the school from, you know, I'm, I'm torn. I don't know what to do yet. I could just do a Clyde and say, well, that's how I feel, you guys do what you're gonna do. Which I might do.
Kristin?
I, I appreciate everything everyone had to say. And I'm, I'm not unmindful of the fact that there's some parents that are very against full day kindergarten, although now you get it, no matter what, starting in January. And I know I sat out there for many, many years thinking that this is gonna be the year that we pass all day kindergarten. And I really, it really struck me, too, the two, when Jesse and Marty both kind of talked about that equity. And I was, I was taken back to when we were talking about eliminating B, B teams when I was sitting out there. And that was a big argument, both from community members and, and staff that, you know, not everyone is at the highest socioeconomic level here in Charlotte. And there's some things that we can do to try to help kids that don't, don't have the advantages, advantages that some of the other kids have. And I think there is sort of, much like when we're at CSSU meetings, there's that sort of Charlotte is different from everybody else. And the fact that we don't have full day kindergarten, which is a real burden, granted a short-term burden for some parents, but if you're barely making it and then you have to figure out what you're gonna do with your kid for that three months, it sort of heightens that, you know, I don't wanna say elitist, but sort of that impression of Charlotte that we just wanna keep things as it is and we're not willing to make this investment in our kids that is better for our kids, I think, but also is better for us as a community, I think. That whole argument about what's equitable and, you know, where we wanna go as a community, that really, I, that really struck home for me. And I'm not in my, that, we have a huge budget increase. We also need to remember that we've had, you know, a zero budget increase or, I mean, we've, if we had gone up slowly for the last four years, we wouldn't have a ten percent budget increase. It would have been parceled out over those years. But we've been so lean for these past four years. So I support keeping all day kindergarten, the decision packet for all day kindergarten in our upcoming budget.
You know, I hate to be the one all about money, but I have to admit, I really thought I was gonna come here and be overwhelmed with parents wanting full day kindergarten. And I'm taken actually aback a little bit by parents saying, we like it, but this isn't the year. If we have parents telling us that they're worried about the budget passing and that it's tough economic times for them, and I can tell you, I sat at a four-hour select board meeting last night. I, I don't know how we can sit here. Our job is the best quality education at a price the community can afford. I think there are millions of things I would like to add. I'd like to add a robotics, I've talked about this forever. There's so many things I'd love to add to the budget. We can't have it all. Our community is, is parents, but it's also the eighty percent of the community that doesn't have kids in the school. We've, we've gotta look at, we've gotta look at all of them. I can't support a ten percent budgeting, a ten percent tax increase. I can't. I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
What about a nine point six?
I'm having a hard time with nine point six.
It's not that much of a difference what they're without kindergarten.
I was pretty, I was pretty, having a hard time with eight point two.
Right.
It's gonna be tough. And the more you add, it's like baiting people. Really, how high can we get this before you wanna vote down? This half, full day kindergarten, the return on investment and the risk that we take by putting it into the budget, I don't, I don't see the benefit to doing it.
Right. I, I, I agree with you, Lynn, of course.
I love Sue's passion, though.
Well, I, when you were talking, I wrote down divisive issue. And I'm like, question mark, like, really? This is not divisive. This is all, it's, of course, we're all gonna want full day kindergarten. And then I heard what they had to say and, and you're right. I didn't think it was a divisive issue. I figured, well, yeah, full day, everybody's got it, but us, we're the only ones. And our literacy scores, the committee said, the study said, I mean, hit, duh. But I hear you. I mean, there, it's not, these are parents. And it's, it is a divisive issue. And that being said, I don't think, I think that second vote is gonna pass or fail regardless of whether it's a nine percent, six percent, ten percent. I don't think how much is in that second vote is gonna matter, quite honestly. So that's not why I'm saying what I'm saying. But it is a divisive issue. And I think that we need to be careful on being sure that we get all the votes that we can on this budget. And I haven't heard anybody say, I'm not gonna vote for the budget because you don't have full day kindergarten. If we don't put it in there, I don't think we're gonna lose votes. Maybe mine. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I'm gonna stand with you in the voting booth. Okay, Adora, where are you?
Yeah, I don't think we should include it. And I was, I was waiting to hear what people said. It's very, it's not fifty-fifty. It was very, actually, by my count, it was two to thirteen. I don't know if it's, that's an exact count, but yeah, I don't think we should include it.
Okay, so what I'm hearing then is that of all the decision packets to add to our new baseline of, that incorporates the Betcha Transit benefit, we're adding a primary, there's a desire to add a primary classroom teacher and fund half of the laptops.
Can you remind me, I know you answered this last time, Greg, but since we haven't put in the substitutes for best practice, will we get, had we talked about moving that up? Because you have to find that money somewhere, 'cause otherwise what were you gonna?
Right, we will be hiring those subs and we will pay them.
And otherwise, it would run as a deficit.
Right, we'll be over budget.
We'd have, we'd have to take it out of our fund balance. That is gonna be very low at the end of this year. So that's forty-three twenty to add on.
And does the administration feel comfortable? Because, you know, I really strongly advocated that we should not jump around on the list of priorities that we were entrusting you to prioritize. Does that make sense to you, Greg, and Audrey, for us to bump that up or, or not?
Well, I, I mean.
It's like a have-to, like, I don't, yeah.
I mean, that's money we're gonna spend, but there are things higher than it on our list.
On your priority, yeah.
But it's not like you're not gonna do the best practices.
Because we're doing best practices.
Correct.
So we have to do it.
Well, they would just find it somewhere else, you know, they'd have to be creative with their, their budget.
But I don't see how, I mean, we're, the budget is so tight. I don't see how you creatively can find, unless no teacher can get sick this year and we're gonna use all those subs.
Well, if we're running surpluses, then I'd say they could find it, but we've run deficits for the past three, three years. I, I don't think, I don't know where they find it.
I, I'm tempted to not move it up because it's so far down on the list. And I hate to use this list against them. That doesn't seem fair, but, you know, a thousand dollars for young writers, you know, four wins, thirty-six, you know, there are all these other things that, science supplies, and there are all these things that are above the, the subs.
But I think there's a chance that we can find alternative funding mechanisms for that. And I know that whole argument, if it's important, it should be a part of our budget. I, I really do respect that, but we can't fundraise for substitute teachers. You can't have a bake sale to pay.
How come that isn't included? Is, are subs not normally included in professional development money?
Correct.
Sorry.
And going forward, that's, it would seem to make sense that it, that's a cost of having a professional development if you're taking people out of school during school day.
Yeah, we're still talking.
Is this additional subs or?
So that they can go to the best practices.
I don't know why. Because we do budget for subs, right?
Just for teachers being sick.
Right.
Do we wanna include it or not? Do you wanna take an audience question first or no?
Can I apologize for coming late, but as far as the computers, the four wins, the young writers, that's being put in the budget, why isn't that being?
We're not putting that in the budget.
The PTO, that's always funded that, you know, when we try to raise money, that's gonna be something that, you're not putting in the budget that we're going forward with that for? Okay.
What do people wanna do? Oh, I'm sorry. Joe?
Question. So, let's say that, assuming, hey, let's say that we get technology going to buy those like computer. Can you free up those like money for something else or, or ones for your E-MO that has to go to that particular thing?
Do you wanna answer that, Mr. Mason?
Assuming you've already funded the technology in the budget, that, that money is available for other uses if you don't spend it on technology.
Okay, so basically what, you just lose them or you just cannot spend it on anything else or?
No, you can.
It goes into our fund balance if we have a fund balance at the end of the year.
So what happens with the fund balance? Do you just sit there or can you use it on something else?
No, let me start from the beginning. The, the community votes a budget of a certain number of million dollars and change. The board has the responsibility and the obligation to spend that in the education of its children and can spend it up to that dollar amount. If it underspends in one area, it has the latitude of spending that on some other object on the budget. If it underspends its budget at the end of the year, say voters approved eleven million and they only spend ten, the, the net of that would go into fund balance and be available for future years.
Well, so my question is that, let's say that, you know, Bill Gates kind enough to give us, you know, thirty thousand dollars to pay for their computers. So now, there will be thirty thousand dollars that they don't have to spend on it. So can they take that thirty thousand to spend on something else?
Yes.
Go for the grant, Joe, go for the grant.
I'll call, I'll, I'll call my buddy, you know, Juan Buffalo.
We could take a billion.
Imagine what you could do with a billion dollars. What, so what do people wanna do with the, with the forty-three twenty?
Yes, I think we should include it.
I'm fine not including it, but I don't think it's gonna make a difference if we do, so I don't.
Okay. Kristin? Yeah, I think we should. It's something, it's an expense we're gonna incur and otherwise it just makes what little wiggle room they have completely go away.
All right, so Bob, are you keeping track of all the additions?
Just land with three people attached to yes?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So do you get a, a total budget of seven million, four hundred and thirteen, eight seventy-six?
Of course, if that's what you say, I guess. Adding them to the other big month number, I'll go with that.
Seven million, four hundred and thirteen. Seven, four, thirteen, eight seventy-six, seven, four.
Michael and I will audit your mass tomorrow.
Please do. So that would mean a second vote of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Roughly a six-point-six-seven percent budget increase and a nine-point-six-five percent tax increase.
I think, I think and hope, well, I do disagree with you, and I hope I'm right, that the, the difference between a ten-point-something second vote and a nine-point-something second vote will have some effect on some voters, voters, I think.
Well, it just says a number. It doesn't tell you the percentage, it just says X number of dollars, part A, part B.
Well, it's, it's our job to educate, yeah.
Another question. So, we have a volunteer. Well, so I meant to ask this morning, so in the month that has transpired, Shelburne has used their fund balance so they don't have to do two votes. CVU is working very hard to only have one vote. Williston only has one vote. So as it stands, it's just Heinsberg and Charlotte that are gonna have two votes. And Heinsberg votes on their budget on the floor. So they will know that day and they can adjust their budget that day to accommodate the sixty. um to accommodate the sixty Heinsberg people who show up to vote on their budget. So Charlotte's really kinda sitting out here on her own. We're, Hossel are the only school with the exception of Williston, which is in a very different league than Charlotte, to have added to our baseline. Everyone else has not, either not added or they've cut.
Hey, I know this is a minor amount, but Bob, on the change worksheet, um, ELP went up by almost eight thousand dollars.
Yes.
And did we receive? I mean, we're supposed to, you know, we put, we spend money, but then we get money back. Were we anticipating that? That ELP would go, I mean, obviously we weren't. It's on a change sheet, but do you know why it went up so much?
Uh, the ELP numbers are set based on forecasted enrollment within the uh program within the community of Charlotte.
So if we have this big increase this year, then we're gonna have a benefit in a year or two.
In tax rate, not in revenue.
Right, if those kids stay here and go on.
You get to count the kids the next two years and all other things equal lower your tax rate, but.
Just seems odd. If our kindergarten population keeps getting smaller, how is that ELP number getting bigger? But maybe kindergarten enrollments going up.
It has to do with interest in the program, interest in families enrolling in the ELP program. It doesn't necessarily tie directly to growth and number of kids in the community.
Thank you.
But we would have, our our current ADM, our, I'm sorry, our current equalized pupil takes into account?
The two years prior enrollment in uh ELP in the community.
Does anyone else in the audience have any thoughts on um on the budget, on taxes, on this process?
What happens if the first one passes and the second one doesn't? Does it mean that we just don't have this and we have everything else that's in, okay, so what's it gonna look like and then what's the worst case scenario?
So my understanding is that in order for this, the first budget, first vote has to pass in order to consider the second vote. If the second vote passes, we're in great shape. If the second vote vote fails, um, my understanding is that it comes back and the board can choose to put out a new budget amount, correct? For that um, that second vote.
Or the same.
Or the same. They can, you know, kinda like, it's like having a failed budget. And I think we get up until a certain date to keep trying like we did the last time, at which point we have to live within a certain means.
In this case, you'd probably have to live within the first vote.
At any point in time, the board can choose to live with the results of that vote and live within the first vote.
And what happens if the first vote fails?
Then it's just like the budget failing, you're, the board's here trying to decide what to do next in the community. Right.
But if the first vote, if we just settle on the first vote, it's, we have to cut two hundred thousand dollars.
We have to cut two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, of which a hundred and ninety-nine four forty-eight is part of our baseline budget.
Plus, I think it's important to note that also that number does not include the teacher that was hired over the summer.
Correct.
So the primary teacher that the board approved to put in is to retain a teacher that was added over the summer. So it's not adding, it's not adding a teacher, but it's adding a teacher to the budget because that was after the budget. Correct. So it'd be two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars plus a teacher.
I just have a technical question. How do you, how does the board plan on educating um the rest of the town that's not at this meeting tonight? As to what what they're voting on and why they're voting.
Well, actually, thank you for bringing that back up because where I was going with that, after I told you what all the other schools were doing, originally, we were going to have an SUY committee is that, that must not still be the case. It was just Charlotte and Heinsberg. So we're gonna probably have to regroup and um, I know the PTO has taken on a huge task, thankfully, of um getting the word out to parents and helping to educate the parents um and getting out the parent vote. As a board, we need to start working. Originally, there was gonna be an SUY committee that was gonna work on the education piece and we're gonna have to.
I think it makes sense for us to get together with Heinsberg, though. I mean, the citizen paper goes to both towns and then we can both break off and, you know, do whatever we're gonna do in the Charlotte news and whatever else, but I think there's benefit to us working with Heinsberg.
And there was a board member who has volunteered to work with some, with a group from Charlotte if you decide to do that route.
I would also like to make a plea to all of you. You sat through a few hours of this now. You have much more education on the issues than anyone else out there. So I'd really encourage you to talk to your neighbors and your, everyone you know about what you know now that they don't.
Colleen? Oh, sorry, Heather.
Um, some years back, when we were trying to pass a tricky budget, I recall that we had a a bunch of coffees at people's houses. The the people that I worry about not getting the information are people that may not be likely to read the Charlotte news or even read Front Porch Forum or read the school newsletter. Um, you know, those are the people that I I feel like we really need to reach out to. Um, so I'm speaking for myself, but I'm pretty sure that I could get a lot of teachers interested in participating also. I mean, just having a a series of community forums that be, you know, and really reaching out to those people that you think might not hear otherwise. Um, so that I think when people hear firsthand, you know, that this is not excessive. It really looks like it in terms of numbers, but it really isn't in actuality. But I think it has to take a face-to-face exchange and explanation in order for people to really understand that. Um, so I'd be really supportive of um trying to organize things like that. I think it would, it's a really big risk for it not to pass and I think all the energy that we could put forward right now to ensure that it does pass and get the information out there is energy that's really well spent.
That's true. We did do the senior center and I think we went to the Grange that time, too. Heather?
My point is, um, I don't know if you guys meet on February nineteenth, if that's a board meeting night? But that's when Meet the Candidates night is going to be um down at the center and I was, um, the Grange is sponsoring it um in part with the Charlotte News this year and so I was going to offer up if you folks wanted a bit of time where it would be more than just Meet the Candidates, maybe Meet the Budget.
We'll take it.
We can make that arrangements.
We meet that night, hold on.
But I I didn't know if it was a night you guys met, just the week before the break, so.
Yeah, that was a problem last year, too. We, we should meet that night, but.
Can you meet there? Why do you have to meet here?
What time is it, Heather? Is it at seven?
I believe it's at seven, yes.
Maybe if there's business, the February agenda, I think, is pretty light. So maybe we can meet before at the senior center and then do that. We'll figure out, but thank you. We'll, we'll.
And Colleen, when you said there were coffees, so if, how how do you think we should get the word out? If people don't read the news or Front Porch Forum, how would we know, how would they know where a forum was gonna be? Do you remember how that worked?
It was really like the pockets and communities within the town reached out to neighbors, really.
People they know.
Yeah, and just and just called, you know, people up and said.
And some of these were in people's houses as opposed to at the Grange or?
Yep, there were really pretty informal people sitting around, having a cup of coffee and something to to eat and just having a conversation. But there were always at least several teachers at each one of those.
Is that something you'd like to spearhead?
I don't have enough on my plate. Um, you have a retired teacher next to you. I can either take it on or I can delegate it. How's that sound?
That's great. Colleen, with the PTO, I'll talk and see if we can get something on that side of it to help that burden be a little easier in organizing.
Great.
Okay, anything, Dorothy?
I'm wondering what happened to the other items on the decision packet list?
So we actually had looked at the decision packets um at our two meetings in December and on our December eighteenth meeting, and guys, please jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. We um, we went kind of through them and decided that this is a prioritized list from the administration and I think as we went through them, we basically decided we couldn't afford to do it all. It would be a well over twelve percent budget increase. And we looked at what their priorities were. We looked at what the other um asks were and thought that maybe the, these other pages could be funded. There were alternative means to fund them.
Some of them.
Some of them. And so we uh decided to just focus on the, on page one, which means by next year, their font will be really small and everything will be on page one. The total amount for the full budget? Well, these are my numbers. Bob's numbers are the real, the real ones, but I have seven million four hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-six. Any other comments about the budget taxes, anything? Okay, uh, then we can move on to, thank you all for your help and your inputs. Um, we appreciate people coming out. We really do. Four point one point three review articles and warnings.
Yes, because I just wanna make sure that when you see them next at your last meeting, you aren't shocked and dismayed. So the revenue sheet you've you've got in your hands, we'll update that. Uh, the only change is updating the expenditure line on the bottom of the page. The change sheet to recap, we're gonna add transportation reduction, the primary class teacher, one uh computer cart and the forty-three twenty in substitutes. The tax rate chart.
But before you go to that change worksheet, can you just go over, um, just for my benefit, the um, the things that are already on there? I know the Common Core, the ELP, the C Y. I was curious about the five thousand.
Yeah, we never talked about that.
Lee, go ahead.
Oh, at the CSSU meeting, remember we had the three options decide, to decide on how to fund C Y? And the C Y, oh, C Y board, the CSSU board voted um to pursue option three, which was each school would then be fully funding C Y. And and we used a a hybrid ADM count. We used basically fifty percent of what.
Halfway between, we were just assessed five eight.
Or NK twelve. So I'm assuming that they're taking out the five thousand additional contribution because we're now paying, if you look down at the other thing, we're now, the thirteen thousand, we're paying for the whole program. So we don't need to make an additional contribution.
So the thirteen forty-one is the C Y. And we are expecting some revenues perhaps from that?
Possibly.
Four, I guess, would be the word.
But it wouldn't happen until, it would go back to CSSU and then it would come back to to us.
Who's gonna be keeping track of that, Lynn?
Well, Sue, I want you to know. The three of us voted against it.
All right.
And Charlotte and Heinsberg, oh, the two schools with the two vote budgets were outvoted by the schools, by all the other schools. It actually was a very good conversation, um, but we were outvoted.
And there were good arguments from um
CVU.
David Raff about that it's, was a sudden change for CVU, yeah.
Well, yeah, all right. Good job voting that down, girl.
We cried.
Okay, so um, and the rest of the things are what we'd already talked about, the eight thousand for the E.
ELL.
L L is what that eight nine is. And, okay, I just wanted to make sure I did, wasn't anything that I hadn't wanted clarification on. Okay.
Okay, we're back to warnings.
Sorry, I just didn't know what.
That's okay.
Okay, so that's the change sheet, the tax rate we don't need to spend time on. The uh Article one or, yeah, Article one, part B number will go up by the decision packets you've made tonight. We'll revise that sheet and get it out to you. What I'd really like you to take a quick peek at is the annual meeting draft warnings. Article five is your budget in two parts. Does everybody have that sheet in front of them?
I don't have that sheet.
That's what it'll look like. The, the actual ballot will have um the ability to, uh, for voters to exercise their decision twice on that same article as a part A and part B and have to be counted separately. We'll insert numbers based on the work that you've done tonight into the article. The Article six is your fund balance article. You've made no decision to use your existing fund balance. I assume that is a decision. And so we'll, we'll have your articles read as they do here. And that's it on the articles.
We don't have any fund balance to apply.
We have zero fund balance?
No, we have two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, but but after this year, we'll have two hundred thousand dollars, so.
And it's below the recommendations from the auditors, yeah.
And that's it on articles.
And I did note, notice that Jerry Schwartz took out a petition to be our school district moderator, so moderator, so.
Oh, he did?
He did. We're in good shape.
So if there isn't any way we can go below the recommended fund balance, and that's not a risk that you would recommend that we take? You said that Shelburne was being creative with their fund balance or?
Yeah, but they have half a million bucks in their fund balance.
Well, I don't know what their, I mean, that's, is that the rate, the scale, the range of scales is different.
Their budgets are a lot bigger than ours.
They are.
But for us to make any appreciable difference in a tax rate, we'd have to take a hundred thousand dollars out, at which point our fund balance would be less than a hundred thousand. What if we need another teacher?
What if the roof falls in?
Well, building stuff is definitely, yeah.
Yeah, but we're also using our surf fund to get lockers and we, we punted a bunch of stuff to that.
I shouldn't have said roof. I should have said water. What if we have pink water?
I'm, I, 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 I don't wanna just shut Sue down. Do, I mean, if people wanna entertain taking money out of fund balance, I think we should talk about it.
I just don't know the risk, you know, I don't have enough history and knowledge of what has come up before that's needed to tap into that and how much is enough. You know, it's like, you know, my, 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 my backup account gets pretty low sometimes and I still manage, you know what I mean? It's a.
And I feel like, um, you know, all that talk where things used to be considered crumbs and we didn't worry about it. I think now that you're so tight, you need the fund balance more than you used to. You need more of that little cushion in case because you can't creatively just borrow from a different line item, because, am I right?
Yeah, I, I, I give you the advice for what it's worth. The, the balance you have is, is not sufficient to sustain application as revenue over the long term, so you're gonna have to face into that at some point in time. And you're not necessarily secure in running operating surpluses year to year. So, so you wanna make sure that you've got coverage for what happens this year and next. My advice would be to stay away from it, leave it. It's not sufficient to do what you'd like to do, but you, you have every right to spend every penny.
And it's not like we're gonna be able to put it, put it back in, you know, it's not like we're expecting to have extra anytime soon, so.
Not this year.
And it's a whole year in when you start budgeting next year, because now you're down, whatever you put in for revenue is not there. And that's working against you, so.
Right, right. That would be getting behind A-Fo, I guess, more so than the kindergarten, the conversation. All right, just had to talk about it.
Okay, um. Five point O Action Matters. Do I have a motion to approve the, approve the announced tuition?
A dollar figure of thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is that the maximum that we're allowed or how does that number?
No, we have a prescriptive formula with which to calculate it and it really is of a little value because at the end of the fiscal year, you have to do your actual cost. And if you've overcharged or undercharged, you go back and get it or return it, so it's um. I'd recommend you approve it and find the more significant things to worry about.
Just ask him. Okay, that's all.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Someone?
I didn't see the minutes, so I'm gonna stay. I didn't see the minutes, so I'm gonna stay.
Second.
Sir, second?
I never got the packet. It's all right. I probably did, but don't put it.
All those in favor.
You want to see Serena?
There were sort of... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. 7.0 Director's Comments? I just want to say thank you to the PTO and Jenny in particular for that. I don't know how widely dispersed the email was, but that was very, very informative. And it took a while, and you did a really good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue?
Oh, for Abby, say something. Just used to go me down the line. I don't have anything to say, I'm sorry.
Adora?
Well, I was gonna say the same thing. I wanted to thank you for your explanation, which was very clear about our situation.
Lynn helped as well, thank you.
Great. Thank you both.
I, Clyde, you're gonna go last. I, I just want to thank Jenny and Abby for being our budget buddies this year. It's our first year doing it. I'd love to sit and talk with you at some point and get some feedback on how it was.
Is this their last meeting?
Well...
Is the next one's?
One more, but it's...
I think a lot of it's very pro forma stuff. I really appreciate the time and the energy that you've put in over the holidays in yet another not-easy budget year. So thank you very much. Okay, Clyde?
Hi, how's everybody?
Okay. Then, before we move into executive session, I just want to confirm our next meeting dates. Our hearing is next Tuesday. Reminder, it's at 6 o'clock, not at 6:30. We have our CSSU Board meeting, February 13th at 5:00. And we're gonna take a look at this February 19th meeting. Elaine nor Bob, neither Elaine nor Bob can be here. So I want to take a look and see what's on our work plan, our work agenda, and see...
On the 19th, you're saying?
Yeah.
Can we move it to a previous, like, a different Tuesday?
Yeah, I want to, I want to look and see what we have on the agenda[1781.24]